I'd like to call the special meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Legislative Department Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and the City Council of the City of Victorville. And at this time, we'll go into public comment. I do have a card. Dorothy, do you want to speak now in the public comment? Or will we go into item two?
Dorothy Miller, I've been told by several people, we have to pass this budget. I don't feel we have to pass this because we've not done the ones before it. If there's certain people we have to pay, like fire and police, pay them. But don't pass the whole budget till you get everything in a row. So you know what you're paying and what you're not paying and what you haven't paid. That's the only way you can do a budget. You can't do a budget piecemeal. But you really and truthfully need your fire and police. The rest of it can just wait until you're ready to get everything else together so you know exactly where you're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. And when we go through the process of the workshop, you'll understand a little bit more about the budget process and why it's necessary to adopt a budget. Thank you. At this time, we'll go into item number two. It's the workshop to discuss and take possible action on the budget. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Cox.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we have presented the budget for the 2019 fiscal year. I'm going to just have a very, very, very short presentation because Doug Robinson is going to be introducing the staff and making a presentation. This has been quite an interesting process because of continual changes that we've had to guess and experience from the state of California and the threats of what the state is going to do or not going to do and whether or not what the qualifications are on whether or not the actions of the state of California would cause an economic hardship. What are the conditions of the economic hardship? Who would apply? And then who would be exempt from the state taking the money, if anyone? We believe, based upon the past actions of the state, that they will continue to try to raise taxes and establish a budget. We believe, based upon past actions, that they will attempt with whole funding to make their budgetary process work. And it's going to be an unknown what occurs at the state level. And there will be lawsuits against the state, particularly redevelopment agencies throughout the state. And it's going to be necessary then to look at these figures month to month in regard to income and expenditures. It's difficult to make the estimations, but they have been gone over several times by the people involved with making the guesses on the income. And of course, the department heads have cooperated on reducing the expenditures wherever they could. It is quite normal to have a mid-year budget reassessment or adjustments if necessary. We want to have the council, Mayor and Council, know in advance that we will be doing it quarterly because it's going to be sensitive based upon what the state is going to do, based upon whether incomes are reduced. And we have continually received and do receive new information in regard to the projections of what's going to happen to the economy. And where we are now is half the experts are predicting that we have hit bottom and that it is now getting better. And the other half of the experts are predicting that we will not hit bottom until about June of next year. We can't make predictions on either one of those guesstimates. And so we're going to do it on the actual income and expenditures with directives to all the department heads to reduce expenditures, to continue to reduce expenditures wherever we are. We will have a full quarterly reassessment. And then we absolutely know that we're going to have a mid-year adjustment. But we believe, based upon the information and as many times as this has been reviewed, it's as good as it could probably get at this time. And I do appreciate all the support and the work by the Finance Department and the department heads in getting here. And Doug has headed this up. My appreciation for the long hours that all of these individuals have spent. And I'd like Doug to introduce those individuals and proceed with the presentation of the budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Mayor and Council, it is my pleasure to present this budget to you today and to present this PowerPoint presentation. But just to be clear, this is not my work. I was involved with it. I helped direct some of it. I got involved specifically as we were needing to make cuts to the general fund and was kind of leading up that effort to make those cuts, to make those loans as necessary, those sorts of things. And in the middle of making all of those cuts, and some of them involved reorganizations, part of the reorganization, I ended up becoming the department head over the finance division and by de facto then responsible for the entire budget at that point. So my involvement grew at that point. But most of the heavy lifting was done by then. Most of the heavy lifting that I say is every number that you see in your budget books today was keyed in by hand by one of the three individuals sitting right here or from somebody from one of the departments also helping out with spreadsheets on an individual department basis. So there are literally millions of numbers in this document. Every one of them had someone's fingers touching a 10 key and putting it into an Excel spreadsheet. And one of the three folks sitting here pulled all those together or together, they pulled all those together into this budget. As you are aware, we are looking at other software programs and hope to sometime in the near future have a software program that will work, meet our needs with regard to budgeting and do a little bit more of that for us. But at this point, let me introduce Adele Moser, who's our Assistant Director of Finance, who really was the leader of this team from a budgeting standpoint. She's on the end. You all know her. Next to her is Terry Ellis, who's our Management Specialist, who has been sort of our budget guru for years. And Francine Millander, who is our Management Analyst at this point as a result of a reorganization. And Francine has been involved with the budget for years, but also involved with billing as needed, also involved with the CDBG program as needed. She's kind of done a little bit of everything because she has that ability to do a lot of everything. So I want to thank them for their hard work on the budget. And with that, I'll start the presentation and then turn it over to them. Some of them are not so comfortable with doing the presentation, but it'll be a growth opportunity for them. I'm looking forward to it. Let me go ahead and get started. As I said, I've kind of focused on the cuts. So I'll kind of kick it off with that. Council made it very clear. The priorities were police and fire, public safety. Code enforcement, we included in there as having essentially no cuts. And then also economic development. Although economic development made some significant cuts to their travel budget and to other portions of their budget. They didn't lose any staffing. And they participated with the rest of the city in some of the pain of benefit reductions and some of the pain of salary reductions. But in doing so, were able to maintain their existing levels of recruitment. Of course, the other major funding priorities that you set was the Mesa and Esquali interchange and the wastewater treatment facility. Those remain in the CIP. And you'll see those a little bit later on.
Doug, is there any way we can get this on our screen so we don't have to strain our necks and turning around?
I will ask that Frank in the back make that happen. I'm assuming he's madly clicking away. You got it now? Okay. Thanks, Frank. Frank's behind the mirror, the man in the mirror. We talked in June, I believe it was, maybe May, late May, about some of the reductions that we were considering. Some of the reductions that the department heads had already worked on, including a 32 percent reduction to operating budgets. We talked about layoffs. We talked about benefit reductions. We talked about salary reduction slash furlough. And all of those things, we implemented. We had to do that in order to make this budget balance. Couple of items of interest that I know that the council has had some interest in, as have members of the public, is that this budget at this point does consider the elimination of funding for the Chambers of Commerce and the closure of West Wind's golf course effective September 1st. That's the basis for this proposed budget. Obviously, the budget is not final until the City Council approves it. I would expect that to be points of discussion later on. Just to give you a sense for where we did cut, the general fund was cut just shy of 20 percent. The overall budget or series of budgets, including water, including the CIP, a major portion of the CIP, was cut about 38 percent for the total of all funds, another number that the public seems to have some interest in, down from $568 million, down to $353 million for this year. And then we mentioned some of the departments that didn't have cuts. Just to give you a sense for some of the areas that did end up cutting more than the 32 percent so that those other departments did not have cuts as that was your priorities, are listed there: public information, development, fleet, IT, and on down the line. One thing that I need to make very, very clear, you're all aware that in May, when we talked about this last, that there was about a $13 million gap that we were trying to cover. We were about halfway there at that point. And we are almost there now. We're still technically $1.3 million short of that number. However, we do have fund balance from the end of the '08, '09 fiscal year in order to cover that balance, that $1.3 million, so that we do have a balanced budget. But another key thing that happened, and I detailed it a little bit more in the memo that you received yesterday, is that we were able to realize a return of workers' compensation premiums in an amount of $1.5 million. Essentially, for years, we've been paying into workers' comp. And they take those excess premiums and hold them for us in the event we have a large loss or something like that. They've assured us that the $1 million that still remains in that fund is enough to cover our projected loss history for the next couple of years without problem. And we will still continue to pay to workers' comp on an annual basis. However, they were able to return that $1.5 million as a one-time event. So in essence, if the economy doesn't change and if we don't change our budget or our level of expenditure, next year's budget will have a gap of about $2.8 million when we get there because of those two items that are sort of one-time revenue sources that we can tap into for now. So what this means is that as we move forward throughout this fiscal year, we're going to come back to you with additional cuts. We will come back to you with additional adjustments to the budget. And you know, we pray that we'll come back to you to tell you that, you know, because of cash for clunkers or because of, you know, some other economic impacts that we're realizing additional sales tax that we weren't expecting to. So that number is going to shrink up as well. But between now and June 30th, we intend to have a budget on time next year without question. We need to close about a $2.8 million gap, either through additional revenues or additional cuts. That concludes my portion. Next up is actually Francine. And she's going to give you what she referred to as Budget 101, just to kind of walk you through the document so you know what the pieces are and how to best use them.
Good afternoon. This is the boring part for you, and I apologize in advance. I'm going to start out in Section 1 of your budget book, if you have it handy. This is where all the basic overall financial information and summaries are for the budget. You may realize, and we'll get to those sections, we start out on the department level where the department heads give us their line items. We roll that up into the fund level then. And then finally, roll it up into the summaries here. So I just wanted to explain a little bit about what these summaries are so that you get an idea. The first one on page four, starts on page four, actually runs for the next four pages, are your estimated revenues by fund. These are arranged by legal entity. These will be the same legal entities that you have resolutions for this evening to adopt the budget. They are the city on pages four and five. And this is one huge spreadsheet that goes across both pages. And then on the next two pages are the other four entities. But basically, what you're looking at is, on the left side, you'll see each fund listed individually, the first one being the general fund, and then what the current revenues are. Basically, these are revenues we get: sales taxes, property taxes, permits, licenses, those types of revenues. And you'll see that at the right-hand side there, there's a total column for your current revenues. And then on the page next to it are your non-current revenues. And these might be loans or bonds that are received to help take care of the fund or any reductions in fund balances. Like Doug spoke about, this year, we're going to use about $1.3 million out of fund balances to make the general fund whole and have a balanced budget. And then any cost allocations or transfers coming into the fund. At the very bottom of the page, you'll see that for all city funds, we're going to ask you to adopt a revenue budget of about $175 million. And again, the revenues will equal those expenditures to make a balanced budget. The next section we're going to look at is going to be the summary of operating revenues. And that starts on page eight. You'll see a pie chart there on page eight, basically outlining what we talked about earlier. Oh, thank you. The different types of revenues that we have, broken down about, again, how they're received, whether sales tax or TOT, property taxes, licenses. And there's a pie chart there that lists those. At the bottom, the table shows the last five years' history of what we budgeted for each and then a percentage change last year over this year. And you can see that our revenues are down totally by about 32 percent. And again, that's just operating revenues. The next section is the revenue forecast assumptions. And this is starting on page nine. Basically, this is the baseline assumptions that we use as staff here and then our expert staff, department heads, and those who help us prepare the revenue assumptions or estimates each year for things that we must take into account, like inflation. For a lot of revenues, sales tax being one, you take into account inflation, unemployment rates, housing market changes, population estimates. These are all the baseline assumptions, again, that we provide to all of the departments that assist us so that we all start at the same level when we do our estimates. The next section we're going to look at are your revenue sources, uses, and estimates. It starts on page 13. And basically, this is a listing of all the city's major revenue sources. And they're listed by type again, again, taxes or permits, those types of fees. On the left-hand side, it shows you how those fees are derived. On the right-hand side, it tells you if they're a general fund or if they're a specialized or restricted fund. And then where the authority comes from for us to either collect that tax, that permit, that fee. So that's a real helpful source sometimes you're looking at. And people are like, well, what's the triple flip? The explanation's in here. I've looked at it for three years. I still don't have it memorized. So this is where you would look that up. Now we're going to look at the expenditure side. And we're going to look at the estimated expenditures. It starts on page 23. And again, this is the overall summary for the five different legal entities that we're looking at and broken down into different columns: general operations and CIP, then any additions to fund balances, any cost allocations that are going to be paid or transfers paid out. And again, that totaled down at the very right-hand corner, those total expenditures equals the total revenues. If you flip over to the next page, on page 25, similar thing: summary of expenditures by activity. And this pie chart shows the breakdown again by general government, public safety, public works, community services, and special funds. You'll see that about 50 percent of the city's expenditures are under the special funds categories. And those basically are water, traffic control, street lighting, CDBG, home, all those federal grants, state grants. So you can see a large part of the city's operating budget is actually special funds. The page facing it is the summary of capital improvement programs. And again, those are by activity. Terry's going to go through the CIP and explain to you basically where we've budgeted the funds and what projects, big projects, we have this year. But you can see again that the chart gives you a five-year history of where we've budgeted funds and the percent change over the last fiscal year, which is about a 51 percent decrease. So those are basically your overall. We get to there by going through the next section, which is the fund summaries. And again, I'm going to talk a little bit about fund accounting so everybody is aware. Fund accounting is basically, for each fund you set up, it's supposed to be a self-balancing set of books segregated for a specific purpose. And so we have separate funds set up for grants or the general fund, any number of funds. You can see we've got, what, about 100 and some funds in the city? So lots of separate self-balancing books to look after. In this section, Section 2, you're going to see that is organized again by entity. So it would have all the funds under the city first and then under the water, the RDA, the SCLA, and the library. And then within each of those sections, it will be organized by fund number. I'm going to run you through one of these, give you the example of the general fund, which starts on page 27, just so you have an idea of how each of these fund worksheets is organized. The first thing you'll see is that the revenues are first on page 27. They carry over onto page 28. Again, it's broken down by those revenue types: taxes, licenses, permits, fines. So these are basically all of the revenues for the general fund in each of those categories. Then you'll see on page 29, at the very top, are all the expenditures. And this is basically all the city departments that are funded through the general fund. Underneath that, you'll see there's the CIP projects that would be funded. This year, we aren't funding any through general fund, but that's where those would normally be listed on a fund worksheet. And then any transfers coming in or out of the general fund. You can see, for example, the equipment replacement fund. We transfer into that fund each year. Currently, I believe, we are paying for leases on vehicles. And then you'll see at the very bottom, revenues over or under expenditures. And you can see again that this year, our revenues are short by $1.3 million. We'll make that up with fund balances. So that pretty much gets you through where the fund summaries are. And then if you continue back all the way to Section 3, you'll have all the department summaries. And again, that starts on page 95. These are the worksheets that go out to all the departments. And the departments go through line item by line item. They prefer, prepare personnel schedules to figure out what their wages are going to be, their benefits, all that good stuff. And then again, they budget for electricity, gas, all their utilities, contract services, all those types of things. And again, like Doug mentioned, they were given a real task this year to reduce their budgets by a minimum of 32 percent. So it was really a lot of work for them, especially since things like gas and electricity don't go down. They only continue to go up each year. The next section is Section 4. And Terry's going to go through this real, in a lot of detail for you. But basically, it's broken down into a cover page on page 227. It gives you the total of all projects by fund. And then it has separate individual pages for each of those types of projects. I just have two slides left. She's anxious to talk to you. But we'll let her get to that. The next section is Section 5. And that starts on page 250. You can see we've got a department org chart there. Through this reorganization that we did, we went from a total of 16 departments down to 10 departments. And then on page 251, is your staffing by department. These are just full-time employees currently. After all the layoffs and everything's been said and done, the city now has 394 employees. And last but not least is your appendix. And that starts on page 260. Basically, what that gives you is definitions of any of the terminology outlined in this budget document. And that's all I have for you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I was going to do a song and dance for you, but Doug warned me against it. So I guess I got to get right to it. Okay. We're going to go through the capital improvement program. And if you look in your proposed budget books, it starts on page 227. The first page covers the total CIP by fund. So you can get an idea of the different funds and how much each grouping is going to cost by fund. Okay, as you know, the total CIP is about approximately $150 million. The major projects include the Esquali I-15 interchange. Estimated costs for this year will be approximately $38 million. $14.8 million is funded by various grants. And $9.125 million will be reimbursed by sandbag. And the balance will be funded by Measure I, Road Diff, and Sanitary Division. Next major project is the industrial wastewater treatment facility. Estimated cost for this year will be approximately $41.9 million. At this point in time, it's funded by the water district until bonds are secured. Next is a brief outline of street sewer, traffic signals, and drainage improvements. Total estimated cost will be approximately $15.3 million. As you can see, streets will include new roads between Gateway, Air Expressway to Momentum, Innovation Way, Phantom West to George Boulevard, the High Desert Corridor Study, and reconstruction around Valley Center Drive. Sewer will include Hesperia, Center Street relit sewer, SCLA Westwell pump replacement, and various diversions. Traffic signals will be new signals at Amigos Road and Village Drive, Bear Valley Road and Fish Hatchery Road, and various controls. Drainage will include Filamesa, roadstorm drain replacement, the US 395 Palm Dale Line, East O1, and miscellaneous drainage. Water district improvements. Estimated cost of $21.5 million. As you know, this does not include, this amount does not include the wastewater treatment facility. It includes various pipelines, right-of-way relocations, percolation facilities, reclaimed water facilities, wells and boosters, and a new enterprise software system. Public works improvements. Estimated cost is $2.9 million. Improvements include citywide asphalt improvement, curb and sidewalk installation, and Mojave River Walk. Public safety and fire improvements. Estimated cost is $485 A23 and $475 respectively. These are carryover funds for the completion of the police station renovation and the new fire station construction. Same with facilities and golf improvements. Estimated cost is $1 million. And this is a carryover of funds for the Green Tree Clubhouse and Sunset Ridge Park. Airport improvements. Estimated cost, $5.9 million. Improvements include the completion of the fuel farm relocation, engine run-up apron phase two, rescue and firefighting vehicle, and the fire repairs to Building 780. Venus improvements. Estimated costs are $8.8 million. Improvements include natural gas backbone infrastructure, SCLA interconnect, and steam infrastructure. Redevelopment improvements. Estimated cost, $13.2 million. Improvements include infrastructure for Dr. Pepper, Snavel Group, OPA for Desert Plazas, residual receipts loan for Signature Avalon Properties and Pacific West. And that covers everything on the capital improvement program. Next is Adele.
Honorable mayor and council members, now do we have enough money for everything? First of all, you know, I'd like to go back to page 7 where it talks about the reductions of unappropriated fund balance at the bottom of page 7. And that shows that we're going to reduce our unappropriated fund balance by $32 million. Then on page 24, we have the additions to our unappropriated fund balance. And that's, you know, money that will be coming in, and that's $9.9 million. So subtracting the two of those, we need to, you know, go into our cash reserves by about $22 million. At the end of, on June 30th of 2009, in our bank accounts, we had $75 million. And so reducing it by the $22 million And so reducing it by the $22 million, if it goes exactly as we've got planned, we'll have about $52 million at the end of 2010. Next, let's look at our general fund cash balance. You know, with the consolidation of the sanitary district, our Parks and Rec district, our fire district, we anticipate, you know, having a cash balance at the end of 2009 of $2.9 million. With the reduction in unappropriated fund balance of $1.3 million, we'll still hopefully end up at the end of the year, at June 30th of 2010, with $1.5 million in our unappropriated fund balance. Next, I wanted to talk a few minutes about our operating revenues and how those operating revenues flow into the city. As you can see by this pie chart that we talked about earlier, you know, we've got about, I want to talk about the first four, the top four revenue generators that we have within the city. And our intergovernmental rental revenues are 37 percent of our total revenues. Our charges for services are 32 percent. Our property taxes are 9 percent, and our sales and use taxes are 7 percent. Our property taxes, as you can see by this chart, this is for our 2008, '09 year, this is the actual revenues that we received in property taxes. And you can see for the first five months, we received nothing. That's because our property taxes come in, you know, starting in December, then we have a large payment in January, and then we have a large payment in June. The peaks in February and in June are our triple flip, you know, sales revenue or property tax revenue that we receive from our vehicle license fees. And so that's why they're spiked in those February and in June. So you can see that we go a long time before we receive that revenue. Then we've got our sales and use taxes. Because we're on accrual basis for our revenues, you know, in July and Jan, or July and August, we don't receive, you know, any of our, any sales tax. That money goes to the accruals for the previous fiscal year. And then we also see a spike here in January and a spike in June. And those spikes are because of the triple flip again, where the state keeps that money until the property tax payments are made or until January and June. And so we see about a $4 million, you know, spike during those two times. Next, our intergovernmental revenue. You know, these are revenues that we receive from our grants. And you can see that, you know, we have a huge amount of our revenues are contingent to one, our grants. You know, our grants are mainly through a reimbursement basis, and so the sooner we get those reimbursements, the better off we are. So we're going to strive this year to, you know, to really get those reimbursements as quickly as possible, so that revenue comes, flows back into the city. And then we've got our charges for services. You know, those are fairly, you know, consistent during the year. These are charges for our water, you know, our trash bills, you know, and things like that. You know, the revenues come in consistently, but also the expenditures go out consistently too, with our big contracts with BRTech and with our big contracts with BBWRA. And so these, these kind of show you where we are, you know, with how those revenues come forward. You know, with the financial status report that we're going to give you, you know, now on a monthly, or on a monthly basis, we're going to try and incorporate, you know, some of these charts into there, so you can see, you know, why the revenues aren't matching the expenditures, you know, on a consistent basis. And I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Adele. Yeah, one of the things that Adele touched on there was the monthly financial report that you requested. At this point, is somewhat rudimentary, and we're going to make adjustments so that, as you see, these different revenue sources, all of the major revenue sources, come in in the second half of the fiscal year. So as we move through these first few months of the fiscal year, in fact, if you look at the report that's in your agenda for 7 o'clock tonight, it makes no sense at all, because there haven't been any revenues that have come in. We have expenditures that are fairly regular throughout the year, but the revenues really don't start coming in until after the first of the year. That's the reason why we need to have some fund balance in these funds, why we try to maintain a cash fund balance, so that as we work through the fiscal year, we've got enough cash on hand to pay the bills until the revenues come later on in the fiscal year. So I would make one request of you tonight, actually, and just kind of to get concurrence, that what we'd like to do is take that monthly report, keep it a monthly report. Right now, the schedule you've asked for is essentially the second meeting in the month to cover the month prior. We'd like to have another two weeks. Because of the accrual basis that we're using, not all of those revenues have really hit the book, so it makes for a fairly inaccurate report on the second meeting of the month. So what we would request is that essentially, starting in, for the August report, that we would submit that to you one month after August, essentially the first meeting in October, rather than the second meeting in September. It would give us the extra two weeks to get those accruals, to make sure that the August revenues reflect the August revenues clearly, and the August expenditures reflect the August expenditures clearly as well. And then as we move through perfecting this document, we'll try to get a better sense to those bars that we have on there, that will show you where we actually anticipate the revenue being, where we actually anticipate the expenditures being, so it'll be a little bit easier for you to track. That's all of the presentation that we have. Mr. Cox may or may not have some additional words. Would like to take the opportunity once again to thank all the department heads and their staff who worked on making those deep cuts to their departments and worked with the staff very well. Of course, once again, to the staff that put the document together and coordinated all of this. And also to the human resources staff who literally dropped everything as we were going through our layoff procedure to get lists together for Jim and myself to look at and review and make the hard decisions that we needed to make. Without a true team effort, we wouldn't have got there.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this, as I indicated earlier, it's been very difficult to put this budget together. It is the best that we can make projections at this time. However, it does require that there be constant, ongoing surveillance of income expenditures, certainly on a month-to-month basis, but on a day-to-day basis. The department heads that have been involved in this budget are very well aware of the declining revenues. And it is, it must be said, that we will probably have another round of layoffs. We are trying to avoid that, as you noted, from the tremendous cuts that we have made. But the uncertainty of the revenue is going to cause us to do monthly evaluations, and we can hope, with the change in the economy, and we can hope that there are further cuts. But we, it would be misleading to say that we're not going to anticipate more layoffs. We think by July, August, September, by September, we will know where we stand. That could be the first quarter evaluation. And I know it's terrible, the unknown and not knowing, but if we had to make a projection right now, we would, we would project that there would be additional layoffs at the end of September. All we can do is hope and continue to ask employees to save where we can and ask department heads to continue to cut back. We are not in a position to establish new fees, but there are some things that have happened in the past that have become acceptable, that we are looking at. I don't want to pick on the golf course particularly, but one of the things that's happened traditionally, whether it was a shortfall, there was an automatic transfer from the general fund. It wasn't a loan, it wasn't a borrow, it was just a transfer. In all likelihood, there will be no funds from the general fund to transfer, which means that we have to look at, just as an example, as an example, sorry to pick on the golf course, we will have to look at an attempt to operate within the income that it generates. Just for information, the current cost for salaries and benefits exceeds the income that you get from green fees, carts, and sales. Now, on the surface, that might look like that there's no way to overcome that, but the portions of those programs are going to be offset by sales. There's going to be a greater effort to advertise for, to have greater income and more activities and more tournaments. And also, we must request of the council that we be given the opportunity to seek input from private operators on proposals as to what they could propose, to submit proposals to operate the golf course, on whether or not it would be a business decision to take a look at that for the Green Tree Golf Course. For the West Winds Golf Course, there is simply no question that that golf course at the present time must be closed. We are looking at, we're talking with two individuals at the present time, who have an interest in continuing the operation of West Winds. We have no idea whether or not that is going to be realistic, but we do know that we have an ongoing expenditure to maintain it, even though it would be closed with no income. And so we will continue to look at all of these areas. In regard to other activities, whether our incomes, we will be cutting or requesting that incomes support those services, or looking at reducing the services. What we have tried to do was to listen to the council very carefully months ago, when they indicated that there would be no cutback in the health benefit, public safety issues. And I want to say again that we worked with the police department and the fire department of the county, through the county contracts. And as you know, this was already presented to the city council for approval. My thanks to them, because there was no reduction in services. In fact, we believe that there will be an increase in the services, because we not only have the contractual relationships, but we have the county stepping up and providing some services. Because of the difficulty of separating those on a boundary, issue by issue, the fact that we are taxpayers and the Victor Valley is all involved in some of the same issues, they have expanded some services with a direct charge, which translates into possibly increase of services at the current cost. There are some things that have fallen through the cracks in regard to fire. I just discovered this about a week ago, and I assume I'm right. We got a complaint about abatement of weeds and didn't transfer that function to the county. We still have it, but we transferred to people. And that will be, that will be revenue cost neutral, as far as we know. There will be some advancing of funds, but we can lien the properties, and then we return the funds, because we are, we're able to lien the properties if they don't pay. But we're in the process now of having to set up that, and we will do so. But that shouldn't result, results in a delay of other activities, because we're going to be busy setting it up and putting it in an appropriate department. But the end result will be that it shouldn't be an additional cost to the city. We also talked, I talked to the council earlier about we have leases for vehicles. We have a six-month requirement to cancel those leases. Council, as given that permission, it will be done on the first date that we can give that notice, and then in the spring, when those leases are up, the vehicles will be turned in. But we will have a reduction in cost slightly this year, and then much larger cost next year. I don't know, there's dozens of other issues that are somewhat not as important as ones we've covered. I could talk about those. For example, when we talked about the reduction of personnel, the reduction of benefits, I didn't recall that we mentioned that there had been elimination of the merit increases. That was enacted, and it'll be reflected in the resolution the council approves. I don't know if that shows or not, quite frankly. That might slip through the cracks on my own fault, but that's about a $430,000-plus of reduction in benefits. I don't know if that's reflected in here or not, but it's not reflected. It is? Okay, it is. Well, it didn't reflect that the merit pay was going to be eliminated, but that's in addition to the salary cuts and the benefit cuts that we've done. I don't want to continue belaboring this, but again, I want to thank Adog and Francine and Adele and Terry on the hard work that they have done, and especially the department heads for cutting back. And unfortunately, with a notice that there will, at this point in time, probably be more cuts. I do want to mention another item. I don't want to pick on any particular department. There was a story in the Assembly of County Sign in regard to planning building one of the departments of community development, whatever it's called. And I think the intent of the article, if you read it carefully, was that it was to be self-sufficient, to generate the revenue so that it wouldn't operate in arrears. And those questions have been raised, are we going to make all the departments self-sufficient? We will do everything that we can where it's possible, but it should be understood by everyone that it is impossible to make departments self-sufficient, because a lot of the departments are support services and are not supposed to generate income. That's just the way it works. But even those departments have the same kind of cutback mandates that all other departments. We're relooking at fees, and believe me, we're doing everything we can. And there you have it, if there's any questions.
First, I just want to preface my remarks by saying I have the confidence, Mr. Cox, and in the department heads, the senior staff. I do not envy what you've had to go through. It's got to be both from a human relations perspective, as well as just the hours of work, a very, very difficult task. So I'm prepared to accept the budget the way it's presented, because I have confidence in each and every one of you do your best from a professional standpoint. I do have a series of questions, though, that are from a macro perspective, to make sure that I've got a complete understanding. If I've read these documents correctly, and I'm not going to stake my life on it, that I have, and get to my notes. My understanding that global revenues are down about 32 percent, is that a fair assessment?
That's essentially, general fund revenues are down 32 percent. That's how we arrived at that figure.
Well, as I mentioned to you last Thursday, I'm curious to know what the global revenue reduction is, all sources. I don't need to know it in dollars, I'm just concerned about, is it roughly 32 percent like the general fund?
That number, I believe, is 38 percent. Francine, who knows this a whole lot better than I, let me know that the global operating is, that the 32 percent that you were referring to is all operating funds, including the general fund.
Then the derivative of that is, I'm going to assume, because the budget is balanced, that we have had, on a global basis, a macro basis, a reduction in expenditures of a corresponding 32 percent, so that it's neutral, revenue in, revenue out.
There, that would be correct, if you also include the use of currently cash on hand, in essence, the, one of the slides that Adele went through, in fact, I can find it fairly quickly here. Moves quickly enough. Reduce the cash on hand from $75 million down to $52 million. So if you include the use of cash in balance in the city's current bank accounts, that would be correct.
Third question is, I suspect it's in here, if I were to try to do the analysis myself, but I'm not going to do it. I'd like to know what the reduction in budgets are on a department-by-department basis.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can get that to you in a separate memo.
Yeah, it's not, I'm prepared to vote for the budget tonight, so I don't mean to say that it's something I got to have by 7 o'clock tonight. But I would like to know, on a department-by-department basis, how those reductions have been achieved? The next question is that this is not going to last forever, I hope. And although it's not a part of the budgetary process that you've gone through, has any thought been given to what you're going to do at some point in time, when the economy does improve, revenues improve, and hopefully we have an opportunity to at least restore some of the employees and some of the reduction in departmental budgets? Is there any, like, list of priorities, or any concepts of where we may use funds to the extent at some point, hopefully, Mr. Cox will tell us, we got some extra bucks?
We haven't come up with a list of priorities yet, partially because we don't believe that we have an end in sight yet, to know when that might happen. We did, per council direction, extend the layoff policy. The current policy states that laid-off employees would be called back for up to a 12-month period, should revenues improve, per your direction. Per your direction, we extended that to 18 months, in some anticipation, hope, prayer, that by the end of 2010 calendar year, we may be in a position to say, hey, the revenues are finally headed back up, and there will be a greater need for services in things such as the development departments, in parking rec department, in those departments that took those big hits. And if we had a clear enough crystal ball, I think we'd try to get some kind of a list together for input from the council on what your, you know, kind of number one, two, three priorities are on, as we refund, as we bring employees back, as we boost the budget in certain areas. What areas would you like to see us focus on at this point, what we aren't quite there yet?
That's all the questions I have.
I would also like to thank the staff for giving us a balanced budget, and it looks real good. I just have some questions. For example, on, we now have a Victorville Municipal Utility, and then we have BEMUS.
That's the same thing. BEMUS is just the acronym.
Okay. But you do have two revenues and expenditure fund for each one.
Let me know which page you're referring to.
You have one that says revenues and expenditures by fund, Victorville Municipal Utility. And then you have the same thing over here, revenues and expenditures by fund, BEMUS. Different numbers on each.
Which page are you on, Mr. Mayor? Which page, page number?
Oh, it's 36.
36. All right. I may have to call somebody up to help me out with this one. Come on up, Adele. Adele, I think, has the answer to that.
...self the municipal utility, and then Fund 25116 is the public benefit program. It's a separate funding source that can only be used for public benefit, not for operations. So that's why the two funds are separated.
And the other question is, we have, under revenues, we have loan proceeds, that's for the Victorville Municipal Utility. What is that? Getting to your debt service retirement, which is 2.4 million, and that's for the Foxborough and whatever else we add up there. And Mr. Cox touched on the golf course, which is, we're still under about $800,000 under the revenues, and I agree with every, everything that he said, and hopefully we'll get a recommendation coming back on what we do.
We've got several people looking now at the best way to advertise for potential bidders to come in and lease the facility, and see if there's some way that they could come in with some kind of reduced costs. Not sure if it's possible, but we're going to look at all of those avenues, see any options available to us.
Yes, I have a few. Doug, could you or Jim, you articulate, maybe in better terms with your municipal experience, as to why the council must adopt a budget now, even prior to our audit for the '07-'08 fiscal year being done? That question's been brought up by Ms. Dorothy Miller, as well as I've heard it from other folks, and I think we've tried to, I know that I've tried to explain that, but I'm probably not doing a good enough job, so maybe you could address that question for me first.
Sure. It's kind of two separate processes. When I worked at another agency down in San Bernardino, the accounting manager used to call the budget "the fantasy world" and the audit "the real world." And it's kind of a joke, but in reality, the budget is simply a planning document for the council. It's the council setting the priorities for the staff, setting the funding levels, but not authorizing the expenditures, actually. As you know, we come to you every meeting requesting an expenditure of the monies that are budgeted. And so long as it's in the budget, typically, there's not a whole lot of discussion because the decision has been made, but ultimately, that contract, that service, whatever it is, comes back to you for final approval. So the budget is simply a planning document. It's your statement to the staff and to the citizens of Victorville that this is what we will be spending the citizens' dollars on. The audit is an accounting of what we have spent the citizens' dollars on. They seem to be related, but in essence, they're not. They're two completely separate functions, two completely separate issues. Where they tie in is actually right about there. Right now, we have an estimate for a cash balance in the general fund and in all of the other funds at the end of the '09 fiscal year. What the audit will do, at some point, on time, will exactly define what that cash balance actually was, so that we can then use that to make an adjustment at mid-year if we need to, or simply keep it the same, if it remains the same. So just to simplify, the budget is your planning document, and the accounting is simply the recorded history of exactly how the money was spent.
I would add, if I might, I'll add to that. There are actually some requirements, requirements to adopt a budget. You know, the state of California is required by the Constitution to adopt a budget. It's the roadmap that the public, that elected the individuals, it's the roadmap of where you're going and the authorization and the planning that you make public as to what you're going to spend, how you're going to spend the public dollars. There's also requirements to adopt the budget to ensure that you will meet bonded indebtedness because you have sold bonds, you've entered debt, you have contractual obligations, and the adoption of the budget is the promise of the city council that you will set monies aside and budget those monies to meet your obligations, to ensure that you continue your fire contracts, your public works contracts, your health, safety, welfare issues, and that you have sufficient funds to meet bonded indebtedness, to avoid being in default of paying those monies. And so without the roadmap, it's almost impossible to tell how much money you can expend on a monthly or quarterly basis. And then the budget helps the individuals, not only from the point of view who hold that paper that you've sold the debt to, but it's the warranty or assurance that the council has considered all avenues, determine where to spend monies, where to expend monies, where not to expend monies, and to budget the amounts that would meet their indebtedness and do it on a realistic basis. That's the whole purpose of the budget concept. When the audit comes around, you not only audit where the money came, how much money you received and how much was expended, but the audit also refers directly to the budget and makes a determination of how close you were, which is kind of a check and balance from the staff to the council. What kind of a job did the staff do? Were they realistic in projecting the income and the expenditures? Are there corrections to be made? And does that require council to revisit policies in regard to directions given to staff for those programs? So it all works together, and it's the assurance that you give, not only to people who hold the debt, but to the public in general, that you're meeting your obligations as public officials.
One last thing on that. And we, it's been well-publicized that we have been behind on our budget, we've been behind, severely behind on the audits. The adoption of the budget tonight brings us current on the budget side of the House. The adoption, or not the adoption, but we anticipate coming back to the council within a month with the final audit for 2008, and that will bring us current on our audit. And in fact, in a normal year, if we were on time with both of those documents, we would have been, we would have brought this document to you in June of this year. But the audit, that is that sort of bottom baseline number of where we were at the end of the last fiscal year, wouldn't be completed until December of this year. So there's always a six-month gap between the current budget and the finalization of that number that that budget is based on.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Going to the issue of the monthly reports, I'm supportive of you moving it back two weeks, as long as we continue to get them. I think that that's important, but I understand your reasoning for that and however we need to, you know, direct you or authorize you to be able to do that tonight or future count. I mean, I don't know if it's on the agenda tonight or whatever we need to do, but that's, I'm supportive of that. I was the one that was very vocal about getting those, and I want to continue to make sure we get those. Understanding that we're adopting, that we'd be looking at adopting the budget tonight and that it'll be quarterly reviews, are those quarterly reviews going to be presented to the council to bring us up to date on where we're at? When are those planned to occur, considering we're not in, we're in the midst of a quarter right now in a calendar year? Could you speak a little bit to that?
You bet. The quarterly review is, we're envisioning it to be somewhere in between what we have on the monthly and this document. It'll be a more comprehensive than the monthly, but not nearly as large as this. It'll be more of a discussion item. The monthly report is a consent calendar item. It's there if you want to take a look. If you don't want to, it'll probably pass right by. The quarterly review will be an actual presentation to the council of, here's where we are exactly, here's what we're thinking for the rest of the fiscal year. The monthly report focuses more on what happened, what's happened previously, whereas the quarterly review will bring you up to speed on that, but then also have a look forward as well and see how we're tracking on a more of an annual basis.
And when would our first quarterly review, when would you look to have that scheduled?
I would imagine that would be at the very earliest, the second meeting in October, and more likely the first meeting in November for the same reasons as the shift on the monthly report.
Okay.
So first quarter being end of September. Give us a month to put that together so that it's as accurate as we can make it.
And probably the biggest issue that we will have finished by that time and reviewed, you will notice in the budget process, we have the actials through 3/31/09. That is quarterly report. We end the fiscal year in June 30, and by September, we will have the actials for June 30. And this, all these items here will be compared to how close or how far off that we can, may need to make further cuts and give an alert at that point that revenues were down more than we anticipated or not. And I'll give you an example. No one really knows the amount of property tax, sales tax, and those kind of things we're going to get, but we've made a good guess. One of the things that surprised us this year, that we have a large number of empty houses, but we have continued a high level of income from property tax. And we have questioned that and wondered about that. And recently, I received an explanation from an individual that said, you forgot, city, that there are escrow accounts, not escrow accounts, impound accounts. And there's money in the impound accounts to pay the principal and interest and taxes. And so when the house is abandoned and it's grown up and has weeds in the yard, and we have a complaint, and we pull it up, and it shows the current property owner with current taxes and payments, that was really troubling us. It's being paid out of the impound accounts. But next year, those are gone. Maybe even the second quarter. But generally, they were paid December and March, which means that we've got the money through June, but the houses have been empty for a year. If those impound accounts then are empty beginning July 1, we won't see it until the payments in December. May see it in June, but we may not see it until December. There may be a dramatic drop in income. That's primarily why you have the mid-year. We're having the one in September, the quarterly, to see what happened ending June.
Could we go back to the slide on the capital improvement?
Is there a specific one that you want to look at?
There, the next one. Okay. I just think it's important to note, I appreciate the slide and what you pointed out on streets. It does look like a large majority of the improvements are being done out at SCLA. However, the actual budget document has several pages of improvements throughout the city, and I just wanted to point that out because I don't want to be construed that all the money for street improvements is being spent out at SCLA. I know we have some important needs out there, but we also have important needs throughout the rest of the city. And I think the total is almost $13 million in street improvements, and I just wanted to make that point clear because that may be a question that people have, especially if they're looking at this particular PowerPoint presentation. And then the other thing I have to bring up, and probably because I formerly served on the Board of Directors for the Victorville Chamber of Commerce and also their chairman of the board back in 2000, it's very difficult for me to look at making this decision, understanding that we're completely cutting them off altogether. And I don't, I think the council needs to discuss, we've always felt that the chambers are a partner with us and that they play a vital role when it comes to the business community, to economic development, and things of that nature. Is there a way we can figure out to be able to continue to fund them in some sort of way, even if it's not through the current budget? Has there been any talks about that at staff level? You know, I'd like to get the council's feeling on that as well. So just like some discussion on that issue.
I will, let me attempt to answer that first. When we started the cutting process in order to submit a balanced budget, we felt the necessity to have a budget and get it submitted, and we tried to maintain funding in many areas. And we kept using the funds for other items. I'm not going to make the determination to say that there were more important items, but because they're all important, and this is important also. But we felt that we had to fund certain programs, and we continued to set money aside and then use it. We're hoping that through continued cost cutting and hopefully new income, that by having the, watching this on a monthly basis and a quarterly report, it would hopefully have additional revenue that would give the council some flexibility very early rather than wait until next spring. We think by doing this monitoring on a continual basis and keeping the council apprised of exactly where we're at, we're hoping there'll be some surprises, and then there would be funding available very early, possibly as early as the end of the first quarter for council to relook at funding some of those items that we know they want to fund. I just, that's all the explanation I have, because we couldn't find it and make it work at this time. But we're still going to cut, we're still going to look at savings, we're still going to be cutting back, and we're still hoping that there'll be an improvement of revenue or some other things that would occur that would give council additional funding to hold those kind of discussions.
One thing to keep in mind is that our purpose today at three o'clock is just to present the proposed budget to the city council. There's going to be public comment, I'm sure, at the seven o'clock meeting, and you would want to, you know, obviously have a discussion either now or then, now and then, obviously your choice. But I would anticipate that there would be some comments made by members of the Chamber of Commerce that they would want consideration prior to you making a decision. So I don't want you to think that you've got to make a decision by five o'clock at the closed session. It's more of a discussion time point, and there'd be further public comment, I'm sure, at the seven o'clock meeting. So we typically, just for your adification, we typically have this just so that we can present it in a slightly more kind of informal manner and get any questions out that there might be.
Doctor, Mr. Mason, correct me if I'm wrong, but the adoption of the budget as presented is just the roadmap. It's not an authorization to expend funds, correct?
That's correct. This is a financial planning document. It is not an authorization to expend funds.
So if we adopt it as presented tonight, there would be nothing So, if we adopted as presented tonight, there would be nothing that would preclude the council collectively or individually coming back next week, or next month, or whenever, and say, we'd like to see an adjustment in category X or category Y?
Yeah, absolutely right.
Including shifting funds from one source to another?
The, 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 some funding, some shifting can occur administratively, and with council direction, the manager has the authority to do some fund shifting, but also the council has the right to bring this back and hold a hearing every single month and make modifications if it's, if it seems necessary. No prohibition against that, and while, while normally it's done semi-annually in the mid-year budget adjustment, it can be done quarterly, it can be done monthly. There is no prohibition to keep, the council has that latitude if they want to exercise it.
In fact, the council adjusts the budget at nearly every meeting. I know the council knows this, but just for members of the public who may not know this, the front page of every council agenda item has a box, kind of in the middle of the page, on the right-hand side, that asks whether or not it's an additional appropriation. If that yes is checked, then that means that you're making a budget adjustment, that's officially your action to adjust the budget, to increase the budget in order to fund that activity. So, that, this budget is a working document, it does change at least monthly because of that very action. Now, these quarterly reports and quarterly kind of discussion sessions may be another opportunity to, to take a look at, at more global changes than what we typically have done, just based on our fiscal situation right now, but, but, yeah, you're right, it is a very living document.
That's it for me.
Just a couple more questions. One is on the Water District. It shows that $5 million under the revenues, how, how does that adjust it?
Actually, at this point, I've got the luxury of having both Reggie Lamson, who's the director, but also Reggie has the luxury of having the, his assistant director is also the CFO of the Water District, and he puts together the Water District budget, so I will ask one of those two gentlemen to come up to, to speak to that, to that question.
Page 79.
Sorry, what page, Mr. Mayor?
79.
79? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the question?
The question shows your, your total operating expenditure to $80 million, and your income was $75, so it shows 5 million, 5.6 million under. I don't understand that. Most of them have zero for its meter balance, this one didn't show that. But it doesn't show here, it should show.
So, we're dipping into the reserves, that amount?
Speaking of that, it shows that we have 2.6 million general fund estimated, but that doesn't mean that's all the money we have. There's other funds that have, which is, you come back to the reserves and the restricted funds that we have.
That's easy.
Any other questions?
It's, but good questions, and this is a working document. The public probably isn't aware that the council and all staff members have continual questions in regard to the, the budget process, and it's continually reviewed and looked at, and, keep our fingers crossed.
Once again, thank you. It's easier to read budget and, and this balance, so that's very important. Thank you. That concludes the workshop.